Hence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Paul, will you call the roll of votes?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Here.
Jack Paul. Cal Mark.
Here.
James Snyder.
Here.
Larry Hill.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, our regular city council meeting, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and special meeting October the third, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of both meetings.
Thank you, Colonel. Thank you, Colonel. All in favor of passing this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying, thank you. Next, we have a financial statement, September twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to, do I hear a motion for approval?
Make a motion for approval for the financial statement.
Thank you.
So, me too.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, James.
Can we have a discussion on this issue? Yeah, I need some corrections to this September twenty twenty-four financials in the workshop. Yeah. Where we found some errors and some different things. The one that's attached to my agenda is the exact same financials that we had prior to that meeting.
And we were talking about showing where credits were, were supposed to be coming in. Uh, Crystal, I know Crystal was injured.
My apologies.
That problem that we had to take her to the hospital because of broken, two broken ribs.
Sure, and I know she's out the week before, I just. Our job is, if I know this is not a correct financial statement with the correct credit sheet or correct places, again, that's why.
We might need to table that until we.
I don't know, will table a financial or take the vote, Dustin? I, we've never ended it, so I don't know what to play.
You can, uh, we should table it, then, uh, and then, yeah, we, you can just approve it.
Along with the October.
Two at a time the next month, that would be fine.
Is that the, the motion or the direction?
So, there's already been a motion, there's already been a motion in a second to do that, so if we, if, I think there needs to be a, a vote.
A reversal or a vote?
If you withdraw your motion, then I.
Zach, that I need to get with Dale, I mean, we're just questioning the change exactly there.
If you might withdraw the motion, that would be fine.
I can take some votes, and it may be corrected with Dale.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
I didn't make the motion, and, uh, I wasn't aware, I thought we had corrected that, I didn't see it, but, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay, is that, does that strike?
I'll make the motion to table the approval of financial till the next week.
Also, if this is regarding the fifty thousand and one cent, is it for the engineering base?
No, because that wasn't, there, there were some other things too that just.
Okay, okay.
I'll second that.
So, we're tabling, the motion on the table is to table our financials until, uh, next month, until that is discussed and updated.
Then, that has a motion in seconds, so we can just take a vote on that.
Alright, uh, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. So, that will be tabled until next month. Alright, next, uh, on the agenda under our general is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen payoff loan, uh, from the street, one percent to general fund.
I'll make a motion to, uh, for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Second.
Okay, who is the second?
I can't, I don't know, I'm sitting here.
Do we need, uh, any discussion on this?
Uh, we have a motion in seconds, and, uh, we didn't actually re-attach it, and, uh, I think that's okay, well, I have it. Then, it is, yeah, you can, you can discuss it now.
This is, this is basically solidifying what we decided in the special meeting, which was to go ahead and take full payment of the repayment from the one percent to the, uh, general fund.
That's right.
It, uh, a hundred forty-five thousand dollars every week?
That's right.
Right, that has taken.
Just be a roll call vote, and, uh, everybody ready to vote.
Are any other discussion? Paul, will you take the roll call vote?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Jack Paul. Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on under general, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen millage rate. Do we need to read that, uh, caption?
I will. It's the Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash nineteen, the resolution levy and tax on real and personal property of residents of the city of Mayflower and encompassing the various purposes. Of course, this is your annual village, um, it, it must always be passed around October for the clerk.
And twenty-four dash nineteen is relevant to essentially just keep it the same.
Same as it is.
I believe you've been at four for over seven years, this just continues.
I think it said it has changed from three to four in two thousand and six.
Yeah.
I think it's something of that nature.
Making sure, sorry, it's not a new tax, it's just keeping the same that you always have.
I, I'll make a motion to, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash nineteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, do we need, uh?
Roll call.
Yeah, finance, we need a roll call, but.
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to C, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty, this has to do with two fif, address of two fifteen Jackson Avenue, Mayflower.
Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty, a resolution ordering to clean up and repair of property located on two hundred fifteen Jackson Avenue, and declaring intent of the city to bring up, bring the property to city code or demolish it if the owner does not.
Any, uh, discussion on this? Do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve Resolution, um, twenty twenty-four dash twenty, second.
Thank you.
Is this one of the property, is this a new property, or is this one of the ones that we had already done an attachment on?
Thank you. Chris, is that?
I know we have several.
Continuation, isn't it? No, this is, this is a new property, except in Jackson Loop, and the current resident is in Younger Road and Four Hill. Unable to take out this property, there's no kin anywhere nearby that's willing to step up and take ownership of the property here. And we've got multiple complaints from residents opposite of Dogwood, trying to clean up their, some property on Dogwood, sell it, market it. They can't do that with this dilapidated structure, we do no privacy protection, anything obscure in the room from Dogwood. So, that's kind of the main driver, and, uh, yes, we are acting on citizen complaint, but we're also structurally looking at the building too. It, it's not in good shape, and it probably needs to be taken down. So, trying to find the next kin, I do have a lead, I developed today, I'm gonna reach out to them. Obviously, city intervention to demolish any property is the absolute last resort, so gonna go down every rabbit hole I can to avoid that. But, we do need a thirty day process to start that clock, to put some pressure on it, so that's where we're at, and that's why I'm sitting up here today.
Thank you, Chris. Any other discussion on this? Do I hear a motion for approval?
I made the question.
And we have a second also?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Alright, can we, we take a roll of votes, please?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I have some questions?
Yes.
Um, Chris, did you say something about we needed approval of some funds, just to either record something at the courthouse?
So, I, I know we, we've got a somewhat of a freeze on, on spending and, and related, you know, any kind of expenses, but there are filing fees that are necessary with the climate to recover what we spent, the street department to put leads on property. Uh, and every page costs like fifteen bucks to initiate that filing fee with the Parker County, uh, so. Kind of furry off on whether we file those pages, or we just kind of let it ride, and, uh, until funds are released, so we can start spending again.
How many pages are we talking?
Uh, there, there's quite a few. Now, it, it's not every page, it's fifteen, the initial is fifteen, the subsequent page may be a little less, uh, but there are bottom fees associated with everything.
Do you know approximately what it was?
I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to actually have to total everything up.
I think, I think we'd be better equipped if you can get us kind of what one file would cost, whatever, by the workshop that's gonna happen in two weeks.
The Ohio.
We can vote on that, and, because I know we've got to file that in order to make up, but you're absolutely right, we don't want to go in any money right now, not even knowing what we.
Right, yeah.
Where we're at, so.
So, but we do have a clock, there's a hundred and twenty days, and we rendered services, so.
So, but if we hold till the workshop in November, we'll be.
We'll be okay.
Well, we'll discuss it at that point. Uh, one last thing, Chris, do you happen to know if we don't file all of the paperwork, is it still legal?
You, you need, if, if we're going to itemize what we've done, you gotta send all the paperwork out.
That's what I was gonna say.
So, but I, I can work to condense this and, and make it, uh.
Well, why don't you just take a look at what you've got, and then come back and let us know.
A million dollar amount, surely, if it's minimal, we're probably alright, but not, not only I don't feel myself comfortable, say, yeah, go ahead and file it, and then come back with a seven thousand dollar bill, and it's like, oh, well, I, I'm sure it's, I.
I lean on the front, one page, depends, it, it depends on the parcel, if it's, if it's in the subdivision, that description is just gonna be like one line. If it's, if it's not in a subdivision, you might have a longer description, uh, but if it's one page, it's fifteen dollars, it's not. So, we got the associated receipts for cost recovery for will that are approved. Five, five dollars for his payee chances.
You will have that information at the next workshop.
And I know not everyone's the same, we just have a property fifty dollars per property, you know?
Well, this is just a new process for us.
True.
So.
So, could John spot me, but I, I was thinking, I, I was thinking of our timeframe, and I didn't want to stick.
No, thank you for bringing that up, Paul. Thank you, Chris.
I'm all hang here, because I got the next decision.
Yep, so we're moving, we're finished with, uh, did we reach our agreement?
This twenty twenty-four dash one.
Yes, alright, now moving to Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, thirty-six, better dash circle, same situation.
Again, another new property, new, new process.
This is a new property that has been tax delinquent, this will be going on its third year, unable to locate anybody that has any interest in the property, any next kin. Uh, the, the current owner has encountered some legal issues, uh, don't think he's seen him for quite some time. Uh, the windows of all the, and, uh, throughout the house have been open since March of this year, there's nobody living in it, the property is secured, uh, but it's very overgrown, there's trash, uh, we need to secure that property, particularly there at the center of town, and, uh, get the grass cut, because it looks pretty bad. This should be a low cost intervention, not looking to demolish, just looking to clean it up and secure it.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Thank you, Zach.
Second.
Thank you, Colonel. Paul, will you give us, get a roll call vote?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item under general Resolution twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, sale of nineteen ninety-one, Pierce tanker pump. Chief?
Uh, we're just trying to sell, uh, the vehicle in Viper Addison at the N C, uh, wanna sell that in ninety-one, Pierce tanker tanker, uh, sitting out back at Station Two. Uh, we're gonna sell to, y'all approve it, to the bigger four fire department, four or five thousand dollars, that was actually more than scrap value. Uh, but they need it because they need the motor to place in their truck, because it's currently out of service. It's dealing with, they had severe rest issues, and it's not suitable to repair.
Any discussion on this? The price was five thousand. Give it. Do I hear a motion for approval for this resolution?
Make a motion to accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Thank you, I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colonel. Paul, will you give us a roll call vote?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, chief, you might as well.
My, I'm still here.
Alright, now next is a Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, disposal of nineteen, a nineteen seventy-five tanker truck. Chief, you wanna take that?
This truck, for as long as I've been here for the past three years, it's been sitting out back at Station Two. It's been stripped, uh, raided to all parts, we know nothing about it, one of our guys that's been here last, he said that he thought was wrong with it, something blew up in the motor, and they parked it out back, we don't, that's all we know, it's pretty rusty, we just wanna get rid of the disposal of it, it does us no good just sitting there, trying to kind of clean up our assets.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the second. Paul, will you take the roll of votes?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
And asking, I should ask if scrap value is on that one, obviously, if there isn't much scrap.
So, I call the daily unit of assessment.
Not cost of the Holland off, when it is.
It's not gonna haul, it's costing the same thing to haul, uh, the rent, the burden, that has contract with police department, they also cover, uh, the soil, they're taking care of us. Uh, they won't charge us to haul it, the rough estimate was around maybe two thousand dollars, but that's before it goes on scale, so that subject could change. More than we have right now.
Strictly describe that.
Yes, sir. And once we, we're looking at with y'all's approval, hopefully Friday, and once ever, whenever I get that exact number for what we got off that I get tomorrow for the resolution.
Good. Alright, moving on to the next, uh, item, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-nine, knock, knockbox first read. Chief, do you wanna explain that to us?
I think Chief Matthews would have a lot better description on it, it's kinda delayed.
I thought at one time he'd loaded on this.
It, it, I believe it's come up in a workshop before, really, we never saw it through the entire process.
Did we do a vote on that? Did we vote on it from here?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Go ahead.
Roll call votes, yeah. Thanks for turning this up. Yeah. That's it.
Alright, so, if y'all allow me, I'll just kind of explain what it is, as you may or may not know what a knockbox is. This is a knockbox, this is a retrofit box, it's designed to fix the outside of an existing building, they sell various different types, like flush mounts, that are part of new construction, but this is a retrofit box, and keys go inside, I mean, it's very simple, it's a secure vault to place access keys to a building. And this thing, tax title, all that, tax and shipping and all that, you're looking at about five hundred dollars for this box. The way this works, fire department gets the key, we're the only one that has the key to this box, we have maybe six keys, we've got them on the command cars, and we've got them on the apparatus, in the event of emergency, we arrive on scene, we access the knockbox and get the entry keys, we're able to open the doors. If we don't have that, we have to break the door, we have to break the windows, we have to destroy property in order to save property. And where this comes in handy, particularly with the abundance of false alarms, we have to break something to turn out, hey, we didn't have to do it. It's pretty common across most municipalities and larger cities, everybody around us has a knockbox or whatever. So, what I'm proposing, and I'm gonna pass this around, so y'all feel the weight of this, it's not like, it's, it's a very secure vault. If you rip that off the wall, you're not gonna get access to it, there's no way, and I mean, like, you got swords, you're sitting there for an hour, trying to cut into that thing, and that's pretty obvious on the outside of the building.
And I noticed you had this just on first read, is that, is that to give business owners?
Absolutely, I, I don't wanna rush this through, I want everybody to have time to, you know, if they object to this, or if they have concerns, we can address it. This is not something that needs to be on an emergency clause, uh, but the way the ordinance reads, any new commercial construction would be required to install one of these boxes. And any existing building that has an alarm system or suppression system that requires an automatic response from us shall have one year to install this box on the property. And the reason being, if you got an alarm panel, and you got a sprinkled building, we are obliged to respond, let alone, we need a way into that building.
Well, we're talking, clearly, we're talking about the fire department, but also, for false, uh, security alarm.
So, the fire department is the only entity that has these keys.
It's the only?
That is the deal.
Well, how does that work with the police department then?
We, we stand there and wait on the key holder to get there.
Just, just wanted to clarify.
Clarify the five hundred dollars, plus installation, whatever that ends up being, is that gonna be, you're gonna be on the business order themselves?
That's, that's cost of doing business, cost of building that building, and we've got a very finite amount of businesses that are gonna fall under that retroactive.
The, the, the schools.
Right, so, we've been blessed, the school district has already taken it, they've ordered ten, all of their buildings already have those installed, they got ahead of this, they realized the need for it, benefit for it, so those are already in place, so we've got maybe less than a dozen businesses that are gonna fall within this ordinance that are gonna have to use and install things.
And the new businesses?
They didn't blink an eye, though. No, and, so, we, we've asked, you know, even like Family Markets, they just, yeah, absolutely, they simply stood it, yeah. Uh, but there's a few businesses, I'm not naming any names, that they will not do it unless there's an ordinance that will compel them to do so, that do require an automatic response from us, so. Either we pass this, and we have a way to gain entry to that property without destroying it, or we kick doors, and kick windows, and we force our way in, uh, I prefer this.
And like you said, I mean, these are very commonplace in most towns across the country, yeah, I mean, just even outside of the state, they're, they're common.
No, we're just on first reading, and I don't have a problem with that, I'm just thinking, what is, what's the penalty if they don't install it?
So.
They don't get minor compliance, they don't get?
There, there is a penalty provision in there, and, uh, we'll fall back to the general misdemeanor offense that's outlined in our municipal code.
And there's something to be done tonight.
I, I, that's what I was gonna say, is just, I mean, let, leave the door down, and, I feel like, don't you wish you'd have bought a lot of boxes that are about a thousand dollars worth?
And, and, so, in the event we ever do develop like gated subdivision, things like that, this would also fall into there, so we're not trying to break somebody's gate down, any secure properties. So, we had a lot, you know, I'll tell you, Saint Fitness is one of them, they're twenty-four hour facility, they do not have fire alarm, they don't have fire suppresses and assault. They don't fall under the strict category of you shall do this, but they are twenty-four hours, they do have magnetic clocks on their doors. Somebody has a medical emergency while they're working out at three in the morning, we gotta break those doors down to get into it, so it's all value in that box, being on the front door, or the box, that we can gain entry unstruck into when they're down.
And do they plan to install?
They've already installed it, the, the address explained the importance of it, and they jumped around on board, got an order, and it's already installed on it.
Good, good, good work.
So, what's the procedure on this, Dustin?
Uh, a motion to read by title only for first read.
Yeah. Make a motion to read, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-nine by five hundred, for the first read.
Second. Thank you. Uh, let's just take a roll of votes on that.
Okay. Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh-nine, ordinance establishing requirement of knockbox or similar devices to be installed with commercial, industrial, or institutional structures within the city limits of Mayflower and for other purposes.
Thank you. That's all we want, next.
Are we on it?
Okay. Alright, moving on to our next ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, rezoning fifteen Old Sandy Road, R one to S B to C one. This is in regard to the schools, uh, medical society, I believe. Does anyone desire to suspend the rules concerning the reading?
Yeah, I'll, that's the first thing, isn't it, the initial question, suspend rules, uh, I'm willing to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four dash ten, is that right?
Yes.
Uh.
Twelve, isn't it?
No, this is twenty twenty-four dash ten, for the rezoning of fifteen Old Sandy Road.
Oh, okay.
Free ordinance by five hundred, and road ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten after its initial read.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We state the motion, please?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash ten, read the ordinance by title only.
And we vote on the ordinance after it's read. Dustin, you read.
Roll, roll for the suspension of rules.
Okay, we're up for the vote, would you please call the roll, please?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash ten, ordinance rezoning the property at fifteen Old Sandy Road described below from R one S B to C one commercial, may need the zoning map and for other purposes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion second.
Ordinance. I'll make a motion, uh, for the, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten.
I'll second.
Would you call a roll of votes, please?
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing to accept the emergency clause of twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Do we need to restate that motion? Uh, for, is there any discussion on that? If not, let's call a roll.
Mark Kigman.
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, rezoning thirty-two Miller Street from R one S B, S B to R two.
Suspend the rule of that one as well, please. Uh, move that we suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, read the, uh, ordinance by title only, vote on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven after its initial read.
Thank you.
I'll second the rule, please. I'll second that first.
Looking for the suspension, Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zach Jeffrey.
Yes.
Cal Mark.
Yes.
James Snyder.
Yes.
Larry Hill.
Yes.
Thank you, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash eleven, an ordinance rezoning the property of thirty-two Miller from R one S B to R two multifamily, committing the zoning map and for other purposes.
Thank you, do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to adopt, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Colonel?
I've got a discussion as well, I, just because I'm under, which property is this, where is this?
That's on the corner of Center Street and Miller.
By that old grocery store, center block building, by the tracks.
Got you, so wanna make it a multifamily dwelling?
Yes. Any other discussion? Did you restate the motion, please?
The motion has been made and, and seconded. The motion has been made and seconded that the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Any more discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zack Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tom Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Emergency clause.
Look that we, um, or move that we accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven?
Thank you. Do you hear second?
Second.
Please restate, restate the motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
Any discussion?
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zack Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tom Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's all we have to do against that resolution also. All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, amending code for density.
I'm going to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, read the ordinance by title only, and vote on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve after its initial reading.
Thank you. Now your second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Restate the motion, please.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, waive the second and third reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, read the ordinance by title only.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zack Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tom Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash twelve, an ordinance amending zoning code regulations for residential structures within the city of Nookville in case of emergency and for other purposes.
Move we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve?
Second. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Please restate, restate the motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zack Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tom Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I move that we accept the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve?
Second.
A motion and a-
Restate, yes, please.
A motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mark Kigman?
Yes.
Zack Jeffrey?
Yes.
Tom Mark?
Yes.
James Snyder?
Yes.
Larry Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. That is all that I see on, on the general. Do we have any comments?
Is there, is there something happening with the water this month, twenty twenty-four water?
Brennan was not able to be, but it's not, I don't have an answer to that. Uh, did you hear anything about that building? Uh, did maybe?
So, do you know what date prints that report?
I don't.
Um, let's see. There's, I think there's a date on there.
These change dates are from August thirteenth through September sixteenth. But I mean, you're, um, there's a lot on there of estimated usage of six thousand gallons. Uh, the unaccounted is literally unneeded, unaccounted. And it's quite a, quite a chunk.
Four and a half million gallons.
It's been big, but it shouldn't be large. That's pretty big.
I mean, we've had reports where, you know, we're till ten to fifteen percent is normal. Now we're pushing twenty-three percent.
Would you comment on that? Give us some information on that. We'll send it out to everyone.
Can he be at our net, make sure he's at our next workshop so that we can?
Thursday, yes.
Yeah, and we've got to come up with some kind of a plan to rein this in.
Yes, we'll make sure that he's, he's there.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any announcements? Our next work with the city?
Hey, Andy?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed my cue.
Is this under comments or?
Uh, before, January, yes. Uh, kind of like, you know, the real thing. Uh, question, I had the email popped up. For some reason, it didn't send. Uh, I was asking for, uh, for us selling these apparatuses. Uh, we'll have a check in the morning for the one for five thousand dollars. Uh, I've talked with Crystal, I've talked with Dale. I know the city's kind of been in a little bit of a bind financially. Uh, this would be strictly going out of fire. Um, asking to purchase a, um, skid unit, two hundred fifty gallon skid unit, place in one of our pickup trucks we have as a secondary brush truck. Uh, I'm sure most of y'all know we are in high fire danger. And one brush truck has kind of wore us slim. Uh, this would give us a truck to both stations. Uh, between the illegal burns and the grass fires we've been running, uh, our call volume has picked up tremendously. We are roughly eighty-seven runs already this month. Uh, a little over a week to go. Uh, so a little bit about the tank before I get into the other part. It's a two hundred fifty gallon tank, six gallon fuel tank. Uh, it's got everything on one. It's literally in a skid and it slides on the back of the truck. It's all one unit. Uh, the price for the skid unit is fifteen thousand two hundred. Uh, but the forestry commission who we purchased through offers a three-year interest-free loan to fire ordinance only to purchase equipment. Uh, with a thirty-eight hundred dollar down payment, it would be nine hundred fifty dollar, nine hundred fifty dollars a quarter for three years. Uh, I've talked with Dale and Crystal. This would fit in our budget for our operations and maintenance. Um, so just kind of give y'all a feel, wanted to kind of bring it up. Y'all would approve it. That would, you're tremendously helpless right now, especially during the high fire danger. Uh, I was going to bring it up during the workshops, but we had a lot of other things to discuss and I didn't want to, we were already going on pretty long.
So this would be paid for from existing funds?
Yes, sir. Especially with this money we're fixing to get from these two new apparatus that we are selling this week. Uh, we already, the past couple of months, we've been selling access, e- excess equipment due to our grant. Uh, we've managed to sell some air packs, uh, which has helped us tremendously. Um, just chomped up. Roughly in the last two months, we've sold sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in equipment and air packs, uh, alone, alone.
Would this purchase put the fire department at any kind of risk for finishing the year?
No.
Above, but no.
Because.
How quickly, when you get the apparatus in, how quickly can we get it operational?
If y'all approve it, I'll go get it tomorrow.
And then what was the?
It won't take us two hours to bolt it down and run the power line.
What was the, um, what was the financing off?
It's thirty-eight hundred dollar down payment and then it was nine hundred and fifty dollars a quarter for three years.
Zero percent interest.
Yeah.
So roughly.
Three hundred and twenty dollars.
Three hundred dollars a month. Uh, this does not impact our current operations.
Actually, you may want to, to mention the, the condition that our current.
So, fire department's pretty good about keeping everything running. Uh, our current skid unit on our brush truck is, it's still running. We're holding together, having to do some routine maintenance. It's old. I mean, it's, the department's had it three years. But adding a second one would benefit us because we can have a brush truck at the main station here and the Easternwood station. So it would give us two, um, one per station. One, one is cutting us tight. We are having to use a bigger apparatus a lot more because of the high fire danger. Use them, a secondary brush truck, we're going to assist and try to keep some of that wear and tear down. I'll be real honest.
Different.
In our budget.
Different.
We don't know what we've got. Our budget's incorrect. Our numbers are incorrect. It doesn't show correctly. It's not a reflection on anybody. It's just not correct. I really, you brought this up to us at city council, I mean, the workshop.
Yes, sir.
I understand what we're talking about.
I really didn't hear you say it, just to bring it to that.
Let me finish.
Yes, sir.
I understand we're talking about some serious financial issues and I don't think, I think you probably thought, hey, man, it's probably not the best time. But I'd like to, if we can, if we wait until the workshop to get this, so we can get our budget figured out and get our numbers right. Or are you going to suffer between now and then if we're? I mean, we'll, we'll hang on. Uh, but this was the fire fund, not the general fund. So. But as a, as a, as a city.
Yeah.
And our budget being incorrect, we didn't even approve the minutes for our budget. But we, I mean, I, I'm with you. I, I get it. I want you to have it. It's not an issue, but I'm, I'm worried about if we go and approve that and then come to find out we're running short of what we thought, then we, then that wouldn't have been a making of a very good move at the time. So that's just my thought.
How does your equipment now, not having this second unit, um, does it impact the safety of your crew?
Well, here's the problem. So if we get a major grass fire, forest fire, whatever you want to call it, we have one brush truck. Our next closest brush truck's coming from Vine Village. The next closest after that is coming from Salt City. We're having to call other departments in. It's what we do on fires anyway. It would be nice to have a second unit because we have one at each station. It would also cut down some response times. But if y'all want to hold off till the next meeting, we can hold off till the next meeting.
Chief, and, and this goes back to that, I don't know if you have the answer to this tonight. Uh, when you said a lot of this, you named funds from old equipment that we sold.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know if that's reflected, where it's reflected into the fire budget. Again, that's, I don't have a problem buying the equipment. I have a problem knowing if we have the money to buy the equipment. Um, and I know what's finance and all that, but I guess my question is, I see you've used about half of the budget operation and maintenance funds for the fire department this year. Is that other nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand dollars? And I know this is about.
Well, we also had a fifteen thousand dollar fuel system we didn't plan on putting in at the beginning of the year that y'all had approved and one of our brush trucks that went out. The brush truck we're calling by that we didn't have. That ate up a huge chunk of it.
Well, but, and this is where the problem lies with me. On operation and maintenance, on that line of, of fire department, uh, the long-term fire department, fire fund, operation and maintenance, I'm only seeing eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars being spent this year so far.
Because I know during budget last year, we had.
We cut it down from eighty thousand.
Well, we also combined two categories last year during budget. We have our vehicles and maintenance and our O and M, we combined into one last year during our budget time.
And here was my point is, we, we budgeted thirty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars for that. You spent eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars of it, leaving just under twenty thousand dollars for the remaining budget year. I guess my question was, do you, and this may be better answered at a workshop, but do you have any other big ticket items that you expect to come out of operation and maintenance between now and the end of the year?
This is our only one. And this was us coming to ask y'all because we're in high fire danger and we can use it right now. The only thing, we don't, we just have our maintenance coming up. I mean, we have truck repairs every day. Uh, I've got a truck being repaired Thursday. I know the rough estimate's going to cost twenty-five hundred dollars for a repair. Uh, it's, we don't know when something's going to break. Uh, we had a truck break down last night. I mean, it's, we don't know. I mean, we just don't, unless something major happens.
What is the truck that you're looking to put this unit in? What is it servicing now? What is it doing?
It's nothing now. It, it was a brush truck at one point in time and we had to pull a skid unit out and place it in another truck. And that was a truck we sold, if you remember, when we sold the one to the Shan- Shannon Hills one by our main.
Three months ago.
Yes, sir. Going by the main bumper. It was a high pressure. It did not serve well on purpose, uh, at all. This one we, this one is a two, it's, I mean, it's, it has full one-inch booster line, attack line connections. It would serve a purpose like our current one does now. Um, we do not have any big ticket items that we know of coming up. I mean, the only thing, we know of is what maintenance we have currently.
But Councilman Jeffrey's point on that truck you're going to put this apparatus in?
It's a two thousand Chevy Colorado with, uh, I believe forty-eight thousand miles. We received it from the forestry commission, free of charge.
Thirty-three quarter ton truck?
Yes, twenty-five and a third quarter ton. Single cab, any weight in it. Uh, it's just, currently its purpose has been just as a staff vehicle. You're having train classes calls. Uh, it would serve a much better purpose having that skid unit in the backup. Gives it all away. We do have the vehicle. I'm not asking to buy a truck. I'm just asking to buy.
Today, you're not asking to buy a truck?
I'm not going to ask to buy any more trucks. Not right now.
If I had the approval of a truck, um, for him to sell earlier, would be used for the down payment for this truck to Forest Street. It would cover it completely. Um, and I would be the one who felt that forestry payments would not start to be due until the first of the year. That.
They usually give you almost a quarter.
Yeah.
But from the first time.
So that would be the next year's budget thing. And at least the, the quarterly payments would be the nine hundred quarter. For this year, for this budget, for all intents and purposes, the truck that he's selling will cover the down payment of that skid unit.
I mean, it seems like we've got the money in the fire budget. This isn't superfluous by any means. I mean, we do have burn ban, the whole state does, because it's a tinderbox.
Sure. And that, my question about that though, not to interrupt, Mr. Snyder, was do we have the money? I know we said that Dale said we do. What I was looking at the balance of that fire budget was essentially two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars right now, which sounds great. But I know a large chunk of that was that grant, that those monies have to be spent.
And we did get a payment, our first, one of our first larger payments from our fire dues on Monday.
So I guess my, my question is, and forgive me for not, Mr. Matthews, you may know this, I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but of that two hundred thirty, whatever, thousand dollar grant, how much of the equipment have we purchased that was earmarked for that grant?
We were.
You said.
We've already purchased the grant. The grant money is already spent. The, the, so when we make a procurement through that grant, they allocate that money after we procure their equipment and we immediately pay the vendor. So you know, they, they don't give us a lump sum of money and sit in the account when we wire it to you.
We submit invoices to them.
Right. So there's no excess fund sitting in that account. So we still have some money left with our V M award. We still got some harnesses to procure. And once we get those final purchases made, we send them an invoice and they send us the money if we.
Well, I guess, I guess this is what's confusing me is that, when I'm looking at grant revenues.
Excuse me, could you, excuse me, Mayor, I've got a young man that's homeless I'm mentoring. I need to take him to a job interview in Conway. He needs to be there at eight-thirty. Would you, gentlemen, excuse me from the meeting, please?
Sure.
Sure.
I hate to ask you, but.
No, absolutely.
I, I think this might, this topic could have been done at workshop, because I don't know enough about the subject matter to give you a big vote on it anyway.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make a motion? I'd like.
Yes, that's what I'm gonna say.
We just wait till the workshop, I understand, I don't think, unless, let's get our votes in the votes.
So we've got a motion on the table. Do I hear second? Cal, did you say second? Okay, second. All in, let's take a vote, all in favor of a motion on the table, indicated by say nay.
Aye.
All opposed, got say? Thank you. We're gonna table this until the workshop. Our next, uh, under announcements, our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November the twenty-sixth at seventeen AM. Our next, uh, council workshop meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November the eleventh, I'm sorry, November the fourteenth, uh, at six PM. And then our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for seven PM, uh, November the twelfth, that's on a Tuesday.
I know we run into this sometimes, that twenty-sixth is the week of Thanksgiving.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
Cause everybody gonna be in town, I wouldn't.
I'll be here.
What day is Thanksgiving on?
Thursday.
Oh.
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, okay.
Go make Crystal laugh.
Yeah. All right, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.